It was almost like that.
Yeah.
It's worth a watch, it really is.
All right, I'm gonna call to order the regular city council meeting for December 2nd. First order of business is invocation and pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Councilmember Gardner.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you so much, Lord, for this day, and we thank you for the ability for us to gather together tonight and conduct the city's business, Lord. We're thankful for the freedoms that we have in this country, and we ask that we do the things tonight in the best interest of Maumell and our citizens, Father, that we represent them well in all that we do, and that we think of what would most benefit our city, Father, that we can help this city to continue to grow and prosper, Lord. Thank you so much for all the blessings that you give us each and every day, and for this wonderful city that you give us to live in. We ask for a special hedge of protection against all those that are out every day taking care of our city, and those that work for Maumell, and our police and fire, and all of those that protect us, and our MEMS as well, Father, that keep us safe and take care of us when we need it the most, Lord. Thank you again for this opportunity to be here tonight, and we ask your blessings on all that we do this evening. Christ in we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Gardner. We'll start off with special guests and announcements, and jump right into John Swanson with MEMS. Mr. Swanson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for coming out.
My pleasure, and I appreciate the invitation. It's been a couple of years since I've appeared before city council to make a report, and so I do appreciate the invitation. And if we can... So, this is not death by PowerPoint, but it might be called cruel and unusual punishment, so be warned. There we are. Slide please. What I'd like to do is, as we had here on our overview, is update you on several items about MEMS, and it certainly won't answer any questions or concerns that you may have. A quick reminder who we are: we were created by the city of Little Rock now 35 years ago, really in a moment of crisis in Little Rock, but MEMS is a public, self-funded, nonprofit, public agency of the city of Little Rock. And with a board of directors, the Little Rock Ambulance Authority. On the next slide, we acknowledge that Doug Ladner is your representative on our board. We have interlocal agreements with nine county governments, so we cover all of Plaski County except Jacksonville, all of Grant County, all of Faulkner County, and the Cabot area in Lono County, which 530,000 residents means that MEMS is the exclusive ambulance provider for about one-sixth of the state's population. And we do that through these interlocal agreements. On average, we're transporting about 215 people every day over that service area, but we respond to closer to 300 calls every day, because a lot of those result in no-hauls or no-transport. So, we're busy in making runs that do not result in transports. Slide please. Our resources across the entire system, we're now up to 62 ambulances, 300 paramedics and EMTs are on staff. I mentioned the 215 a day transport relates to about 75,000 transports annually. We have our own dispatch center, so we are what's called a secondary PSAP, Public Safety Answering Point. So, when you make your 911 call locally, if you're on the phone and it's there for us to talk to, then we're the agency that gives you pre-arrival instructions. We talk you through CPR, talk you through childbirth while help is on the way. And we just achieved our international accreditation as an accredited center of excellence in the dispatch world. Put a lot of emphasis on our mass casualty response, and here in Maumell, to work with police and fire, to get prepared for work with drills, thinking about tornadoes, mass shootings, those kinds of things that unfortunately do happen. So, we spend a lot of energy in working with the other responders throughout the whole jurisdiction to get ready to respond should something like that occur. MEMS is also the coordination center for the entire state's trauma system, and so the ultimate destination for seriously injured patients throughout the entire state is coordinated through our dispatch center. Slide please. Clinically, we are blessed that we have our Dr. Chuck Mason is the chairman or the medical director for MEMS. And a little bit of background, because perhaps some of you aren't familiar with how MEMS is structured. The AEPF is the Arkansas Emergency Physicians Foundation. And what is that? It's basically the heads of all the emergency departments in the 10 hospitals that MEMS serves as the exclusive EMS provider. They sit in conference and judge the performance of MEMS at the physician level. So, as chair, Dr. Mason gets all of their input, best practices, accountability, and to get buy-in, and a common approach to how we perform our duties in the street. And we are also, in this capacity, the medical director for your fire department. Training: five full-time paramedic instructors, and we have our own in-house EMT and paramedic school. And all the required training that our medics need to stay current and up-to-date on procedures and protocols is done in-house. Slide please. Our coverage in Maumell, as you're aware, we have one unit that tier 24/7, and then additional units are dispatched whenever there is a call-out. So, if that primary unit gets a call, then we immediately dispatch another unit from the bigger metro area, the bigger downtown area. If you need two units, if you need three units, we've had as many as six units in Maumell at the same time responding to multiple patients at the same place or different locations at the same time. And so, we do that routinely, but I do acknowledge, excuse me, that the time, there is a gap in time when that unit is first dispatched and leaves the station here, even though another unit is immediately dispatched to Maumell, it's several minutes away before it gets back into this jurisdiction. So, there is the potential for a small delay in the event a call comes in before that unit can get inside the city of Maumell itself. Slide please. To report to you on our response time, the standards that we use, what is presumed to be a life-threatening emergency, is the information that we get on the 911 call. And that's put into a category where we call it that a code one. That is the highest priority response, where the potential exists that this is a life-threatening emergency. We're expected to be on scene in under nine minutes 90% of the time. Why not 100% of the time? Because you can have two calls at the same time, or there may be a delay because of accidents or other congestion that's out of the ordinary. If it's considered a non-life-threatening emergency, a lesser emergency, if there is such a thing, then it's still a licensed IRN response, but the criteria is to be there in less than 13 minutes 90% of the time. Slide please. This slide's a little bit busy, but it actually tells us a couple of things that are pretty important to us. Number one, the key response time is the green line, which, on the far left, it shows you 90.4. And remembering the standard is to be above 90%. That goes all the way back from 2005, and will track all the way through 2019 year-to-date. You'll notice that in '16, we dipped below that a little bit, but immediately recovered and got back into the 92% criteria. And that's a reflection of the fact that we are keeping that unit here, and when it's on a call, then a backup unit will come out to replace it. The orange line speaks to the code-two response times, and since we're allowed a few more minutes to make that standard, you would expect that line to be above, and of course it is. But a key point to show, and we'll talk about this again, is the EMS responses, which is the right-hand scale. But you'll notice that our responses here peaked and then leveled off '15, '16, and '17, and there's been a significant decline in the last two years. And I'll share with you why that is the case. Slide please. But then, on terms of the average response, if you combine the total response times, the other was what we call fractile, that's the percentage. This slide will show you the actual average time in minutes, and that's been pretty much a standard from six and a half to seven minutes across the entire period of time. Slide please. And then this is another way to look at this, because the upper line, where that includes the red line, those are the responses, and that is what consumes the unit, that is what ties up the unit. That is, if you will, that's the expense side of the equation. So, every time we have to use the ambulance in response to a call, then we have committed the resource, we have triggered that response to get a backup unit to come to Maumell. The blue area, the transports, those are the runs that we make that actually are transporting a patient. And those runs, that's what generates the revenue. So, we bill the insurance, we bill Medicare and Medicaid, and so forth, and that is what allows MEMS to be a public nonprofit, and for the most part, a financially self-sustaining entity, is that we do bill as any other healthcare provider would bill. But the difference between the transports and the responses is the difference between the revenue and the expense. The more the no-hauls, then the system starts to get somewhat out of balance. Slide please. And we'll talk a little bit more about the subsidy, because we've asked for a subsidy reinstated for us this year, and I'll get into a little more about why. But if you'll notice, the last four years, we have been able to operate here with revenue that covers our expenses. And what has changed is, if you go all the way back to the 2013 and '14 timeframe, this is prior to the state's change in the way the Medicaid program was being administered. And when that change occurred, and a lot more folks went from being uninsured to or to Medicaid through various paths to either go into commercial insurance or to be covered by Medicaid itself. When that happened, then that afforded us the revenue to be able to cover our costs here without financial assistance from the city. That has changed dramatically over the course of the past two years, and we expect this trend will continue. And so, we are back at a point now where we need to request a subsidy to make sure that we don't lose money in any of the jurisdictions that we serve. So, and I'll show you how we calculate that here in a second. So, again, what changed? The emergency response numbers have been relatively constant, they're down a little bit. And it includes the non-emergency calls that originate in Maumell. And let me be clear about the distinction. An emergency call, be it a code-one or a code-two, is what, think of it as what comes in on a 911 call. A non-emergency transport is that patient who is typically in a hospital and is being returned to the nursing home by ambulance. Those calls require a very specific and strict medical necessity. We don't get to do that for trips to the beauty parlor. It has to be a patient who meets basically a criteria that says they could not be transported by any other means. So, what we've done is include the calls for non-emergencies that originate in Maumell. And historically, we have included the calls that were being returned to Maumell. And with that, if we go back, that's one of the key reasons why the volume has dropped, because the direction of the board is that we are now concluding... Go back one more, please. You'll see when it dropped from 1742 to 1300, now to a projected 1186 by the end of the year. We are no longer accounting the runs that originate in Little Rock that are coming back. And you go back to catch me up. Because it misrepresents the real volume, both here and in Little Rock, in both of revenue and in the task of responding to those calls. So, if we weren't, if we did not serve Maumell, those trips returning from Little Rock would belong to MEMS in any case, because of the exclusivity. So, our subsidy, the way, share of the way that's calculated, is we take the direct costs of the rent, utilities, the average cost of ambulance by mileage, the fuel we burn, all of that. The average cost of labor for our crews, including the backup units, that includes their paid training and all of the other things that goes into putting them out on the field. We include a prorated cost on a per-run basis, and since the call volume here is low, then your share of that is low, of what it takes to bill and dispatch, but it doesn't include the overhead. If we weren't serving Maumell, I would still be there, I hope, and the finance director would be there. So, those things that I call the core of MEMS that are not added because we're a bigger system, we don't share those costs outside of metro, as we call it. So, what MEMS pays, you know, to cover our costs, if we only did Little Rock and North Little Rock, is the core. And then we add on a prorated basis the things that we have to add to the system to handle the other jurisdictions, and then prorate those costs on a per-run basis. I'm sorry, back up. The revenue is the dollars that we collect from those transports that originate in Maumell, and we compare that against those costs. If that number covers our costs, we're fine, and if it doesn't, then we're at a point where we need to talk about having some sign of financial support so we're not losing money here. I have yet to figure out how I can explain that to city council in Little Rock about why we're spending resources that are earned in Little Rock in other jurisdictions. I don't have that answer, so... Anyway, slide. And to give you an idea about what we call the payer mix, and this is key, because every jurisdiction, every part of MEMS is different. But the key point here is, if you look at the biggest piece of this, is Medicare patients. Medicare, the reimbursement rate is set by the government, and we can charge whatever we want to charge, but they're gonna pay what they authorize. And typically, that's with a 20% copay for most Medicare patients. Medicaid, again, the rates are set by the government, and then here, the rate is extremely low and hasn't been changed since the mid-'90s. The combination of the two is about, makes up about two-thirds of the call volume in the payer mix, if you will, are patients who we transport, the rates are set by the government. The rest of that would be commercial, is what we'd all consider to be the normal health insurance. We have a small percentage of facility contracts, and then self-pay uninsured, if you will, is about 15% of that. Next slide. But if you look at how the money that is actually collected, we run on a call, and I mentioned earlier that percentage, no haul, no charge. So, if we respond to a traffic accident and don't transport somebody, then there is no charge for that. That amounts to over 20% of the responses that we do. 15% of what we do, we don't get paid for. Contractual adjustments, meaning if whatever we charge Medicare, they're gonna pay us what they authorize, and so we have to write off. That is a contractual adjustment, which means that we collect about 30 cents on the dollar for the runs that we make. And that's been the system that we've lived with for a long time, but you can see that there's not much of a margin there. And so, if the payment per transport goes down, then we start to get where we're no longer breaking even. And I will tell you, since 2016 till today, the average reimbursement across our entire system has gone down $40. And when you take 75,000 runs, that adds up pretty quick. Slide please. I like to use the Maumell model to share why a MEMS approach to this, though, is, I think, a very efficient and effective way to provide EMS coverage for you. On average, a real number is our crew responds about four and a half calls a day, every day. And if we allow an hour and 20 minutes for a typical cycle, from the time they initiate the response until the time they've transported the patient and returned to the station and are back available again, if that cycle takes an hour and 20 minutes, then it's approximately six hours a day that the crew is actually busy, the rest of the time they're waiting for your call. And then we add to that the six hours of backup coverage that the system has, gets from the system as a whole. So, Maumell is getting about 30 hours of coverage a day from a MEMS ambulance, even though it's only busy six hours at that time. The rest of the time is readiness, so that we're here in a response mode so that we meet your 911 expectations when you call. Excuse me. So, if you were a standalone out here, then you'd be, I would assume, take two ambulances, but they're still only doing four and a half calls, and the revenue is only 3.2 transports a day are paying for the service. So, at 30 hours of coverage, those costs are nearly being met by those three transports a day. If you increase it to 48 hours of coverage, but the second ambulance here are 24/7, the revenue doesn't go up, costs do. And if you need a third or a fourth ambulance, then the question is, where will that come from? And so, MEMS is in a position to immediately respond, as we have many times in the past, with as many ambulances as it takes to meet the needs of whatever's happening here. Slide please. We never stand alone and never stand still. We partner with police and fire all the time on how to improve the effectiveness of what we do in mass shooting response, tornado response, all of those kinds of really serious types of emergencies that only happen on a rare occasion. But on cardiac protocol as an example, a couple of years ago, we changed our protocol. We used to be a load-and-go. Somebody's down with a heart attack, quickly move them into the ambulance, try to do CPR in a moving unit, which doesn't work, and we were not having the success that we should have. And so, our medical director directed us to change our protocol. We now stay and play, that's our language, 30 minutes, 35 minutes, with a cardiac arrest in the field. We do uninterrupted quality CPR, starting with the bystanders, people who are there with the patient at the time. We have invested in what's called a Lucas device, which is a mechanical CPR device, and we're the first ambulance service in the country to partner with a hospital, Big Baptist downtown, for the Ellegard system. And what is that? It's a device that will, over a two-minute period of time, raise the patient's upper torso and their head to 30 degrees while the CPR continues, so as to improve blood flow to the brain. We're not trying to save the heart, we're trying to save the brain, and we want better outcomes for the folks who survive and leave the hospital. And since we changed this protocol, we've successfully resuscitated 130-plus people who have gone home, able to do math, I don't mean to be dismissive in that, but with good brain function. That is what a success is. And so, we're very proud of that. Stop the Bleed Program, MEMS was instrumental in, with the state, and you may be aware now that the state requires that all graduating high school students have to know how to do tourniquets. That was a program that we started back in 2014, working with law enforcement. Another one is surgical, oh, this one, surgical cricorumedy. I can't say it, and I can't do it. It's a paramedic skill, but it's, we just went through this upgrade training for the entire company last week, where the medics are now trained to make a surgical incision in the throat and insert an airway, much like you would find a doc in the ER doing to, as a last resort to protect that airway. We're now able to do that. Community Paramedicine Program is an emphasis on MEMS' part to try to reach patients with chronic problems who, I won't say abuse the 911 system, but for many of them, that's the only way they know how to gain access to the healthcare system. And so, we go out to visit our folks who use us a lot, to try to understand what it is in their personal lives, be it a lack of a primary care physician, or they don't medicate themselves properly, or there's a bad nutrition situation at home, or there's abusive relationships at home. And how do we help those folks connect with the resources they need to have a better quality of life and not rely on the emergency departments to do that? And this has been a very successful and growing program for us. And then I'll mention one other thing about our system improvements. Couple of years ago, MEMS was the agency here in the state of Arkansas that led the effort to get a rule change to allow us to tier the system, meaning in Maumell, we're an all-paramedic response, all ALS, Advanced Life Support. That is the unit that you have here. And through other parts of the system, though, we have introduced basic life support, BLS, meaning two EMTs, no paramedic on that truck. We've had a very successful deployment of that, because in the 911 call, when it comes in, our dispatchers make a very careful determination about the seriousness of the emergency based on what we're told on that 911 call. Every call is assumed to be a paramedic response unless we get sufficient information to satisfy us that it would be safe to send a BLS crew instead. And so, if you're showing the slide, there even, we're so careful about this, that the ambulances are actually a different type, so that they're immediately recognized. This is a BLS unit, it's what called a type-two, but think of it as a van unit, and then slide. That's the paramedic unit that you're familiar with, and that's the truck that is assigned to Maumell. I tell you this because you may see a BLS unit here. We're not asking, I'm not gonna request that we change the agreement that we have to make an all-ALS response here. Economically and operationally, the call volume is too low in the first case to justify a BLS unit here anyway, because they might only get two calls a week that would meet the criteria. You might see that BLS truck here as a second or third unit in, in a mass casualty situation, like a multiple patients in a bad car wreck or something like that. That BLS unit may be the closest truck to give you backup support, but note, too, that the patient that goes on that truck would only be a patient that the EMTs would be qualified to care for. So, if they're a seriously injured patient, they're still gonna get a paramedic. Minor injury patient may very well get the BLS. And so, I tell you all of that, because if you see that unit in Maumell, know that it's either delivering a non-emergency transport from a hospital back to a nursing home here, that'd be its primary role. You might see it backing up a big scene with multiple patients, so that you would know what that's about. Just know there's a difference, and that's what it's about. Okay. So, one more slide. So, challenges that we face, obviously, is to continue to grow and get better at what we do every day, maintain the highest possible standard of care for the people we serve. But our challenge is to recruit and retain the best people, because, as I've already mentioned, our revenue is being capped and, in fact, is now starting to come back down. And that reflects itself in the fact that, well, EMS is a very challenging and sometimes dangerous job. The pay is not very good. In fact, EMS stands for Earn Money Slowly. Just ask any medic, and that's what they'll tell you. I think it means earn money sleeping, but they say... So, and for having an opportunity at MEMS to kind of get into this field, we lose people to hospitals, fire departments, and other people who pull on our talent to meet their needs. So, I see our challenge in, financially, if this trend continues, we will be faced with the long-term issues of trying to ensure that we have the means to recruit and retain the people that you expect us to provide when you call for help. Slide please. And so, I'll get off the stage. Our interlocal agreement automatically renews. If the council chooses to not renew it, then it's certainly your privilege. I would hope that's not your position on this. I do believe that the way our model is the efficient and effective way to deliver care to you, and we are committed to making sure that we stay up to speed on what is appropriate and considered the standard of care in EMS.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Is there any questions, comments, concerns? Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I was gonna ask you, I think you're asking for $26,000?
Yes, sir.
For 2020?
Yes, sir.
Do you see that the start of a rise?
That's my message tonight, is that possibility would exist. But as you've seen from the past four years, when we were able to make that number zero, we did.
And, but going into those four years, it was as high as 76,000?
Yes, sir.
Could be possibly that much?
It's impossible to say at this point, because the action on the, at the federal level with Medicare and what's done with reimbursement, our inflationary adjustment this year in the Medicare rate was 1.5%. So, and that's a standard kind of a trend. Medicaid hasn't increased the base rate in 20 years. And so, we continue to have to impact, take the inflationary impact on our costs, as you fully understand. And the fact that in Arkansas, while we still have a Medicaid enhancement, the eligible, the criteria to be eligible for it is strict, and so the numbers of people in the program are dropping, even though we still have the program.
Well, you're very clear on telling us why this is happening.
Yes, sir.
I'm glad you're warning us ahead of time. Let me ask you, how do you interact with the fire department? Say, usually get to the scene early or...
Fire department, by design, should get there ahead of us, and the partnership that we have, especially since our medical director is your medical director, and so the EMTs, and I know that you have paramedics as well, and so those folks begin their treatment, begin their assessment, beginning, the most critical life-saving techniques are gonna be airway, CPR, and bleeding control, and those are EMT skills. And so, when we get there within minutes on the backside of that, we not only have what they've already done to start the process, but also their hands in the event of having to move a patient out of a confined space, it might be a heavy person in an upstairs apartment, and so we have their physical assistance to help us handle that patient at the same time.
Once you all show up, do you become the chief of care?
Yes, sir, we are, because we're the senior medical people, but we also own the liability and the responsibility for making the decisions about their care. But we do that in partnership. The relationships couldn't be better in partnership with both police and fire. We're very proud of that working relationship.
I was gonna also ask you, we have one ambulance here, and I was gonna ask you, that was our design or your design, but it sounds like your design.
It's our design, because if the request was more, then the cost of, the expense of that would be more, and that would obviously result in this, simple math would result in a bigger subsidy request. So, that's why we use a objective metric of response times. If we're not making response times, then the first, that would first tell us, we're making, should we be doing something smarter? Are we dispatching the way we should? Is the crew taking too long to move? Are they not familiar with geography? Go to the wrong place? For that reason, for example, the technology in the ambulance is all state-of-the-art, including mapping, so we can, they can see the destination on their computer mapping screens and a suggested route to get there to help us make response times. But in those areas where we don't, then if we satisfied ourselves that we're doing But in those areas where we don't, then if we have satisfied ourselves that we're doing, making efficient use of a resource, then the next step is, we need more resource. And how long it takes us, the priority in getting that backup unit to Mammell is a very high priority in dispatch, is immediately start that ambulance, don't delay it.
Basically, at this point, one is appropriate for us?
Yes, sir. That'd be my judgment, yes, sir.
All right. Somebody else has a question?
I believe also, I get the quarterly report, I got one today. I believe Mammell tends to have, from what I can tell, better response times than some of the other jurisdictions. Is it, say, or, they're all good, but ours seem to be also good? Is that accurate, or also good, extra good?
Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Mayor. It's a challenge. It's a challenge, because, again, I mentioned staffing. Our deployment plan and what's in the budget, ninety-nine ALS crews and thirty-three BLS crews are in the budget, but staffing means that we are sometimes short in open shift, but not here. And so, where those shifts are open is in the bigger part of the system that has to absorb that, and there, it puts pressure on response times, no doubt.
Got you. And that was meant to be a good thing about Mammell not talking about any other?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you. Mr. Swanson, I think you kind of touched on this with your previous answer, but I was curious about response times, and it sounds like it is set up, you know, in Mammell, we have two fire departments that are centrally located to service the residents, and I wondered if that had ever been a discussion with MEMS about relocating your, where you're based now, to an area that's closer to the residences?
That is, that's a fair question. And there's a history why we ended up where we are, because if memory serves, that's a city property, that we don't pay rent, and we own that trailer, so we don't pay rent. And so, it was in part a cost-saving measure, but it is always a legitimate point to ask about, and we ask ourselves, is the unit, is the station where it should be? And it is not ideal, because it's a minute just to get to the highway from where it is. And so, I accept that, acknowledge that you're right about that point. And so, to move it would be to both find a place that would allow us to set up an ambulance. Most zoning codes and so forth don't allow mobile homes. We're able to do that in this case. Or we end up renting a storefront someplace at a much higher cost, and again, would be permitted zoning-wise to allow an ambulance. But it is a very typical configuration, that we are in a strip mall between the beauty parlor and the travel agency, and we rent a spot. This is a sleeping station, so there needs to be private sleeping quarters, because it's often a male and a female together on a crew. They need to have a shower and a restroom, and some means to cook a meal. If it's a, not a sleeping quarter, then which just has a restroom and recliners and a TV, because they're in that, they're waiting for a call between three minutes and three hours, they don't know, before they get that call. So, the Little Rock stations are of that nature, where the crews are not hard assigned. Here in Mammell, they are. And again, because it's a sleeping station, it requires those accommodations.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions, comments, concerns? Thank you for coming out. I had the opportunity to go tour the facility earlier this year, thank you for that. I had a pretty good understanding of at least what got police out and about, and a fair understanding of fire, but I just kind of, it was all magic that occurred back there on your end, and then going and touring, especially their dispatch center, was quite memorable. It is, I keep thinking Houston, but it reminds me of like a NASA space, not space station, but with all the computers set up, the big monitors in the front, and it's a top-notch facility, and that was really exciting to see. So, thank you for coming out and explaining what's going on. Thank you to Doug Ladner, who served and represented Mammell on the board for a couple weeks now, I think, or years or decades, quite a while.
We came within a month of each other, in twenty-one years?
Twenty-one years, yep.
And so, I've been, and thank you for being, you're always letting me know what's going on, so I appreciate that, Mr. Ladner. So if there's no additional questions and comments, I thank you for coming out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pleasure, thanks.
Thank you. Next up is Rachel Hall with the special announcement. Rachel, come on down.
Hello. My name is Rachel, and I am the communications coordinator for the city of Mammell. Do I need to say my address?
No.
Okay.
So, we just wanted to inform y'all about an exciting new event happening in Mammell. It is called a Very Merry Mammell, and it is a holiday display competition. So, I'll tell y'all a little bit about it.
Basically, this year, we are encouraging people to get in the holiday spirit by decorating their homes, and just, this event is supposed to promote beautifying Mammell, and just making everything, you know, we always get compliments on how pretty our city is, so just lighting it up for the holiday season. So, it is, nominations are due by December fifteenth, and we will be doing the judging on December nineteenth. Our judges have been chosen, and they are Ms. City Attorney Melissa Krebs. We are also having a member of the community, she is an active member of the senior center, her name is Linda Edwards, she has a lot of interior design experience. And then, the final judge is former city councilwoman Timmons, and as you know, she has a lot of experience with design and event planning and that sort of thing. So, the awards will be on the nineteenth. We will be riding around with the mayor. There will be a Mayor's Choice Award, a Most Merry Award, and the final award will be a People's Choice Award. So, we'll be doing a social media campaign of people can vote on their favorite house, so it's, people are really excited about that. It is already been posted online, so you can go to the city of Mammell Facebook page and share. We also have these flyers, if you want to promote them, you know, individually, or on your own Facebook page, you can email me for the digital copy. But we posted it for the first time yesterday, and we already have eight houses nominated, so we're really excited about that. And it's all two and a half weeks away, so we still have plenty of time to get some more houses. And that is all I have. Do you have any questions?
We expect competition to be fierce, as seems to be the case. As a reminder to anyone out there, you can't just tag your friend in the Facebook post to nominate them. You have to fill out the form, and we have to get some consent, because we'll be taking pictures of the house, and we don't want to invade people's privacy. That said, I think most folks that go the extra mile to decorate their house would be thrilled to have more people see it, so please get those nominations in.
Yes. The link to the form is on our Facebook, and it is also on the homepage of our website. So, if you go to our homepage, it's front and center, we got a big picture on our news flash, so it's pretty easy to find, hopefully.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
Councilmember Scott wanted to know if councilmembers are eligible to win?
I think so. I think so. I see, I don't see any reason why not. You might not get the mayor's choice, but there's a neutral panel of judges for the others. Well.
That's a good question.
Thank you very much, Rachel.
Thank you.
All right. The next order of business is approval of the November eighteenth regular meeting minutes. We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, say, well, let me ask if anyone has any questions, comments, edits? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. I don't have any public comment cards at this time. For the financial statement review from October, Ms. Vega was gonna report on those, but her, she's a family member going through a planned surgery that was an all-day thing, so she was there instead of here. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to have all ordinances and resolutions read by title only. I've got a motion, do I hear a second? And a second, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. With that, we'll move on to the third reading of Ordinance nine eighty-eight, Amending Master Street Plan. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled Ordinance number nine eighty-eight, an ordinance amending the Master Street Plan map for the city of Mammell, Arkansas, to remove a planned roundabout at the intersection of Crystal Hill Road and Council Massey Road.
This is on third reading, are there any questions, comments, concerns?
Motion to approve ordinance number nine eighty-eight?
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Tierney?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaffrazan?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Motion carries. This is the first order of business this evening related to Crystal Hill Road, and we'll get to the second order of business later on, but the next order of business is Ordinance number nine eighty-nine. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled Ordinance number nine eighty-nine, an ordinance prohibiting the practice of engine compression braking, and deafening this, defining this practice as a nuisance pursuant to Chapter thirty-eight of the Mammell City Code and for other purposes.
This is on second reading. If there are no questions, comments, or concerns, it'll be on third reading at the next regular city council meeting. All right. Next order of business is Ordinance number nine ninety, Enacting Supplemental Provisions of the City Code. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled Ordinance number nine ninety, an ordinance adopting and enacting supplemental provisions of the Mammell City Code for the city of Mammell, Arkansas, providing for the manner and amending such code, and providing when such code and this ordinance shall become effective.
This ordinance is, of course, the ordinance dealing with the city code that we have in notebooks, some of us, or online. Are there any questions, comments about that at this time? Seeing none, this will be on third reading at the next city council meeting. We will move on to new business, and the second item of business related to the Crystal Hill Road project, or Road Improvement Project. Resolution two thousand nineteen dash forty, authorizing the city attorney to seek condemnation. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plaski County, Arkansas, Resolution number twenty nineteen dash forty, a resolution authorizing the city attorney to act pursuant to the Arkansas Code annotated eighteen dash fifteen dash two zero one, and other state statutory authorities to seek condemnation by eminent domain proceedings of certain properties described herein for the public purpose of constructing and maintaining street, road, and boulevard right-of-way, and all necessary improper easements related thereto for the city of Mammell's Crystal Hill Road Improvement Project.
All right. This is, the title said it, but I'll shorten it a bit, is seeking, authorizing the city attorney to seek eminent domain to get the rights of ways in easements for their long Crystal Hill. I believe we've gone ahead and added each parcel into this, even though we think that there's, well, we know there's some that have entered into agreements to basically sell us that property, and think there may be more. And perhaps the city attorney would like to actually verify.
There have been, I believe, at least, there's Scott back there, one agreement recently that was signed just last week. We have two attorneys, sets of attorneys, that have entered the fray a little late, and so, I've given them some time to be able to review the documents and get caught up. So, hopefully, within a week and a half, we'll have answers from them, and I have agreed to delay filing until they, of course, it takes some time to prepare the documents and get it ready anyway, until they have a chance to review everything, and hopefully, we'll be able to work with them.
Are there any questions, comments, concerns? Councilmember Scott?
Is there any chance this won't happen?
There's always a chance. I mean, I think the one that I had thought was least likely, their attorney has at least expressed willingness to review everything and participate, you know, give feedback and that kind of thing, so there's a chance, but we'll probably know for sure on everything within the next couple of weeks.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, as far as in general, and I apologize, I forgot to look at the map that you emailed out, but how far beyond the roadway would the city own the property into, say, what was their front yard or whatever?
It varies by lot, by law. Do you have, Scott, do you know off the top of your head what that was? I think in some areas, it was only ten feet. Or yes, use mine thoughts and send me the thought.
Scott Grummer, five fifty Edgewood Drive. So, it varies, but as the mayor said, it's, in some places, it's about, it can be about ten feet, in other places, it could be closer to twenty feet, roughly. It's just a matter of where the road kind of zigs and zags, and whether if there's additional road right-of-way and utility easement included, or if there's just utility easement, which may be less.
Would that be a primary reason for some of these folks holding out? They didn't want that much?
Well, I'll say that the majority of those that we've been communicating with, all of them actually have had, there's positive responses. The thing is that it's been, it's been, we've been working with them for over a year, and we've got to kind of move the process forward. So, as the city attorney had mentioned, is that we have gotten positive feedback, it's just getting down to the crunch time, and everybody trying to really make sure that they've got all their ducks in a row.
Okay. So you're saying, really, it doesn't, it doesn't have a bearing on how much of the land that we're trying to take? That isn't a key reason for objections for some of these folks?
I don't know how to phrase that, because the, and we haven't come to an agreement because we're seeking right-of-way and easement, so necessarily, it has something to do with the rights of way and easements.
I guess that's trying to figure out why some of these?
Well, we have, we could take, for example, the one holdout we thought was someone who said the city hasn't done anything for us, so by golly, we're gonna take it to court. And then, we do have someone who said, you know, I've lived here forever, and my family used to have a dairy farm here, and gradually, over the years, we've given up more and more land, and we're just tired of, and we don't want to give up any more land. We have done our best to make accommodations where we think the road would handle that, and of course, the road is already less wide than it was with the original plans. I naively thought that by narrowing the road down, everyone would come running and be so happy to give it to us. That turned out to not be the case. We have a lot of folks that, if we could continue to negotiate for the next four years, we could probably come up with something. We might have to agree to build them a tree here, or, you know, that sort of stuff, but at some point, we just had to say, okay, here's a timeline, let's start working toward it. And it's been effective so far. At least, some of the folks who said, we'll see you in court, are now saying, we'll take a look at it, so there's that.
I think we do need to go ahead and proceed with all this. I was just looking for information, is all I was looking for here, I'm not objecting to anything. How much about, how does compensation get determined?
So, we, we basically pay them fair market value, and in some cases, I think maybe erring on the side of making sure they're very properly compensated. One of my concerns was that there's a scenario where we could end up paying attorney's fees if we undervalue the property by?
Twenty percent?
Twenty percent, that's what I was gonna say. And so, in a couple cases, we took that, we took what we thought the fair market value was, and rounded it up a little bit, just to make sure that worst-case scenario, we're trying to pay the people whose land we're taking, not necessarily their attorneys, nothing against attorneys, I don't, but, yeah. But that was done through an appraisal. Most of that area is, you know, it's right- Most of that area is, you know, it's right by the river. It's not cheap property. It's right by the river. It's being valued basically at commercial value, so.
All right. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Vaprazan?
I'm glad we're doing this. You and I had this conversation a long time ago when you were city attorney. So I'm glad we're doing this. How long would this process take for eminent domain?
Your guess is better than mine, since I haven't
Once we file, it doesn't take too long for the court to award the rights of way and easements. It, it sometimes takes a little bit longer to determine the value of the land, which is usually the case in, in a matter like this. Usually folks aren't contesting the city's right to do it, just the value of the land. I don't remember how long it took. We, we had to do this for one parcel, the Mayberry property, and I think it took a couple of months. Does that sound about right? About three months?
That ended up being settled, didn't it?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. And so just as a, a reminder, as soon as we get the, the, the rights of way and easements, C A W will begin the water main relocation. I say as soon, when, when their schedule provides, but they are ready to go, they've got money funded for it. We just need the rights of way and easements. Councilmember Gardner?
I just want to follow up with the city attorney on one thing that was mentioned. This resolution gives the city blanket authority over all of the properties that are needed, but you said you may not, we may not need to go through the eminent domain process.
Well, we already know at least one, that we, we have a contract to sell with them, so it's just a matter of
And that's at your discretion. If you hold it off for a couple of weeks, this kind of makes a statement that the city council has moved forward with it, and you may not need to file eminent domain
Right.
against all the properties. Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So hopefully, you know, we'll have more that we can reach agreement with in the next couple of weeks, but
Thank you.
And there's, after we pass this, I believe there's a required timeline where we have to notify them ten days in advance before we file the paperwork, I think.
That's right.
So at the very least, even if we just said, ha-ha, we're gonna do it tomorrow, we couldn't. You have to give them notice of when you're gonna file, all in an attempt to work this out. And we've communicated by voice and letter and email with everyone here. I don't know if we've communicated with everyone by email, but at least by voice and, by letter. Councilmember Williams?
I make a motion that we adopt resolution twenty nineteen dash forty. Second.
We have a motion and a couple of seconds. Is there any further discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. That concludes new business. We'll move on to mayor's comments. Don't forget that we have a budget meeting on Thursday at six in the council room. That's open to the public for everyone who wants a thrilling meeting. And we've had some pretty good turnout by members of the public this year. It's relative, but, and the goal is at the next city council meeting on December sixteenth, that the budget be adopted. If possible, we'll try and get you the, the finalized budgets before Thursday's meeting, but breath on that, we'll see. City Hall renovations are undergoing. I think we briefly mentioned this at the last budget meeting. It's kind of neat going in the front of the building now. If anyone's ever been up there, which is probably not many, it's, it's like a giant hall. We did encounter some problems with the telephones mysteriously going off today completely for city hall for a couple of hours. We reached out to the contractor. The, the folks up front couldn't figure out what it was. It was maybe just a coincidence. AT&amp;T was working on it. And then I happened to know somebody who used to be in the phone business, Mr. John Todd. And I said, hey, John, I buttered him up, and before you knew it, he came on down, took a look at it and had it solved in just a couple, fifteen minutes or so. Something like that. I don't want to embarrass him. It might have been quicker. And so thank you, Mr. Todd, for that. Don't forget about Breakfast with Santa. Pancake Breakfast with Santa is this Saturday, eight to eleven a.m. The Christmas parade is at three p.m. I've included in the FYI section some correspondence regarding the closure of Short Marche. The council asked me to reach out to Judge Hyde. I've done that. I included that in here, as well as Judge Hyde's response. We do have, or will be having, a tree board vacancy, if you know anyone who's interested in that. Get them to throw their, their name in the hat. When we were discussing that Tree City USA Committee, I know there was a ton of people who were interested. And so if you know those folks, reach out to them. Likewise, if you know anyone who would like to serve on the education task force. We had a few folks resign primarily because they just didn't feel that they could devote enough time to it, that they felt, that the amount of time they felt was necessary. So if you know anyone who might be interested, have them get in touch with me. Give me their contact info. I'll get in touch with them. I think that's it. We don't have a planning commission report, so next up is councilmember comments. Seeing none, madam city attorney?
No comments.
Madam city clerk?
No comment.
Holy moly. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. We are adjourned.